We are.
Thank you. Good morning. It is 9:31 on 16 March 2022, and this is the time and date set for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Taxi Cab Authority Board of the State of Nevada. I would call us to order and indicate for the record that present are members of the Board, Rodriguez, Soderbergh, Decker, and Reiser, and on the telephone, Member Thompson. Would you all please stand and join me in the [inaudible].
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Martinez, has this meeting been posted in accordance with and in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Act?
Yes.
Second item on our agenda for today is public comment, this time aside pursuant to Chapter 41 of the Nevada RISE statutes, for us to see comment from members of the public on any matter within the jurisdiction of the Board. We may not take action on any of those items. We may determine in the future to do so. We ask that any member of the public commenting try to avoid repetitive comments and also to limit their time to approximately three to five minutes. Is there any member of the public who wish to adjust to the Board? Seeing none, I will close the public comment session. Item three on the agenda today is interview of applicants for the taxi cab administrator position. Our first candidate is Marilyn Rivera, but before we commence, Member Thompson, who is participating remotely, wanted to make a statement. Member Thompson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to apologize to the Board, the Authority, and the audience for not being there. I think that it is important, and in fact, in my years on the Board, I have become impressed with the people who work in the taxi industry. So for that, I appreciate. Now, on a different topic, there, I have some questions for the candidates being interviewed, and the Chairman has those questions, and I would like to ask him to actually ask them when I am available to ask questions. I think the meeting will go much more quickly and smoothly since he is there. Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Member Thompson. So our first candidate today is Marilyn Rivera. Ms. Rivera, are you present?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, can I go over some procedural issues? You certainly may. Thank you, Decker. Thank you. Okay, so are all three candidates here today? Okay, we've got two. I don't know if we have three, and maybe one is remote, but for any candidates that are in the room, we will ask you to step out while the other candidates are interviewing and log off or be on mute if you're dialed in remotely, so that it's fair, so that you're not listening to the questions and watching the other candidates. For the candidates to step out of the room or then are on mute, we will contact you when it's your turn to interview. After the interviews are over, you can all come back in, and you can all watch online or whichever you choose, and participate in the rest of the meeting or listen to the Board deliberate, but during the interviews, please do not observe the other candidates being interviewed. Thank you. Gentlemen in the back of the room, your name?
Robert Youngquist.
Thank you. Is Mr. Armstrong on?
Mr. Armstrong is not on.
Okay.
They all confirmed for face-to-face interviews.
Okay, very good. So, anything else? That's it, thank you. Ms. Rivera.
Right here.
Yep. Right there.
Perfect.
Welcome.
Thank you.
How are you this morning?
Very well, thank you.
Thank you for your application.
How is everyone?
Very good.
Good.
Thank you for your application. We're going to ask you some questions and ask you to fully and candidly respond as best you can to those, and by way of process, if you're not aware, the Board does this interview process, that we determine whether to advance all or any of the applicants to the Division, the Director of Business and Industry, Mr. Reynolds, he's actually the appointing authority for this position, so after your interview, you're welcome to stay and listen, or be feet if you wish.
Thank you.
First question we have for you this morning is if you could give us like your three-minute elevator pitch and why you think you should be selected administrator.
Three-minute pitch. Well, I have advanced through my career. My prior military, I was a military police officer, where I gained a lot of experience. And then after the military, I had decided, I said, well, I was one of those that really didn't know what I wanted to do, so lo and behold, 9/11 happened, and I knew I wanted to be part of that solution, so that it would never happen to us ever again. I applied for the Department of Homeland Security, where I was one of the first 3,500 people selected, and I traveled all around the country to make a difference, I like to say. I was one of the part of the team that was training all of the new federal employees that were taking over in the airports. I helped federalize seven different airports, which was fantastic. I was at Ground Zero, let's say probably about nine months after it happened. I went to Oklahoma City, where I got to see where the bombing was there as well. So in my career, I've always wanted to make a difference. I've done special security events, I was part of a security event with President Obama, Michelle Obama, which was fantastic, got to work with every federal agency you can ever imagine in the world, so that was a great experience as well. I've been, I was actually got to be a part of a leadership course through George Mason University in Fairfax, Virginia. It was a year-long course, so I think my leadership skills, my experience, everything that I can bring to the table, I think will, I know will advance this agency.
Thank you. This question is one of Member Thompson's, Vice Chairman Thompson's questions. Which of your employment leadership positions do you consider best prepared you for the administrator's position and why?
Hmm, I would tend to say the, I've held quite a few, so, but definitely the, I've held quite a few leadership positions with DHS during my time there. I spent 16 years with DHS, and I held quite a bit leadership positions there, and I think you learn so much from, you know, other people, the diversity of people that you work with and that work under you or work with you, and I think that all of that knowledge and all of those skills that everyone brings that you have or that they have, can, you can take that to every position that you go to, every agency that you go to. So I think that I can bring multiple and a multitude of different experiences with me for the administrator position.
Member Rodriguez.
Ma'am, what do you consider the biggest public safety challenges for an agency like the Authority, and secondly, how will you address these challenges?
I think the, the biggest challenges, I think, especially for, I would think for the Taxi Cab Authority, would be the traveling public and just safety overall for everyone involved, especially here in Las Vegas. Safety is always number one priority, and it seems to be the part that a lot of compliance issues come into play, so I think that would be the biggest challenge. It's just maintaining the safety of the traveling public, of course, of all the employees, the taxi cab drivers, everyone.
Thank you. Member Soderbergh. Ms. Rivera, could you please walk us through instances where you feel you've changed or improved an organization's work culture?
Um, I, so I would have to refer back to when I got selected for DHS, when I started working for Homeland Security. I think that was one of the greatest changes that I've ever made, not only for myself but for our country. 9/11 was a great impact on everyone, and I was, I felt extremely proud and honored to be part of that group, because I knew I was making a change for the better. My biggest focus was always, you know, I do not want this to ever happen again, not to my family. I did have family that was involved in 9/11, so I took it, you know, very heartily. So I think that would be the greatest change that I would have to say that I've made, and I continue to make that change throughout my whole entire career through 16 years with DHS. It was always a different experience, it was always something different, whether I was doing regulatory compliance, enforcement, inspections, investigations, policy writing. I was part of the training team, I worked at headquarters for two years in DC, which was also a great experience, because that's where they, most of the changes are really, really made, so I was a part of that as well. So I think throughout my whole entire career, I've always made changes, and it was, you know, always for the best.
The gentleman who just walked in, are you one of the candidates today?
Well.
Apparently not.
I'm on the stand.
Apparently not, I apologize.
I appear to object to all the candidates.
I objected to that.
And, I apologize, I just want to say I'm not admitting anybody into the online live moment.
Thank you. Number Decker. Okay. Ms. Rivera, next question. Describe a career situation that presented unique challenges where you pursued a creative, out-of-the-box solution.
Hmm, I would have to say the, the current position that I'm in right now, so I am an operations manager right now for a non-emergency medical transportation company in San Diego County. When I first applied for that position, they were, they were, they were hiring for a safety and quality insurance specialist, and it was an hourly position. I went in completely blind, didn't know what to expect, didn't know anything about the industry, didn't know anything about the company, and I just went in and I said, you know what, I'm going to do this, I want it, and I'm going to learn everything there is to learn about it. I started with that company almost three years ago, so July, it'll be three years, and I knew absolutely zero about what to do there, nothing, and I worked directly for the President and the CEO of the company, and I told him one day, I said, I want to run this operation, and I said, and I'm going to make a difference. I want to change things that's going on here. We have some pretty big contracts with the Veterans Affairs, the Department of Veterans Affairs, and myself being a veteran, of course, I, I wanted to change the structure within the company, because there was a lot of things that were not being done correctly. So I told him, I said, take me under your wing and show me everything you need to show me, I said, because I'm going to take over. Those were my exact words to him. Two and a half years later, here I am, and I, I am running the company. The President now says that he works for me, which I don't know about that, but there has been a lot of, so when I first started, they did not have a standard operating procedure. I, I wrote one, put it into play, and it is now currently being used. We have an operating procedure and policies, which a lot of that did not exist when I got there, so I put all of those, I wrote a complete operating procedure for the complete operation, and I changed the structure of how, from everything from how they do interviews to how they load a client into the van with a wheelchair or on a stretcher. Safety procedures I put into place that were not there before. So I changed a lot of the structure of the company, the operations, and the way that it's operating now, so.
Thank you. Kind of converse of that, the question from Member Decker. What's been your biggest career disappointment?
That's a great question. Um, I would have to say, and I don't really want to call it a disappointment, so when I, I spent six years in the military, and I wanted to make a career out of it. I was in the Navy, and I did six years on shore duty, and then I had, I had a child, so by the time it was time for me to go to sea, they said, well, you have to go to sea, and I said, okay, where am I going? And they wanted to put me on an aircraft carrier, and the aircraft carrier was going to be gone for six months out to sea, and then come back for another two months, and then go out another six months, and they said, well, you have to give up temporary custody of your daughter, and that's when I had to say goodbye. I was not going to give my daughter up, so I had to make a choice between my career and my child, and I chose my child, of course, and, so I wouldn't really call it a disappointment. It was kind of sad, it was a bittersweet moment for me, because I did want to make a career out of it, but I know in the long run, I made the right choice, so.
But shore duty in Coronado is not one of the worst places to do it.
I know, harsh duty. Six, three years in Coronado, three years in Point Loma. I know, harsh duty, right? I got very lucky.
Member Soderbergh. So into that answer. What is your view of using progressive discipline in personal matters, and in what situations do you believe this is a useful human resources management tool?
Progressive disciplinary actions are, it's always beneficial. You never know, one, if you're doing the right thing, you always want to follow proper steps, that was also one of the, I guess, procedures that I put into place in the current company that I'm in right now, they did not have any kind of progressive disciplinary action. So I think, you know, you should always start off with verbal, you know, talking to your employee, finding out what's going on. A lot of times, there's, a lot of times, there's more going on in the backdrop that we just don't know about. So I think, you know, talking to your employees and actually finding out all the details, who, what, when, where, how, why, and always document, I believe in documentation of everything. We have this philosophy in the military, if it's not written down, it didn't happen. So, I'm a big fan of documentation, and I always refer to HR just to make sure, especially if it's a big situation. I did have a situation in the current company that I'm working in now where I had a sexual harassment case, and I did refer to our HR department and seek guidance on exactly how to handle all of that, because that is a very sticky situation, especially when it comes to the victim. So there should always be some kind of disciplinary actions in place, and progressive as well, so, you know, you go from one step, once you get to that first step, if it occurs again, then of course you take it to the next step, you know, whatever case that may be.
Thank you. Member Rodriguez.
Thank you. What is the most important skill set for a leader in a law enforcement agency?
Communication would have to be the key to everything, especially in law enforcement. If you don't work as a team, something can go bad real fast.
Thank you. Member Decker. Next question. What is the greatest competitive, sorry, greatest competitive challenge facing the taxi cab industry?
Hmm, can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. What is the greatest competitive challenge facing the taxi cab industry?
Competitive, I would say probably the Uber and Lyft. I would say that that would be like the greatest competitive challenge that is against the taxi cab right now, if I had to, you know, if I had to answer that one, I would think that it would be the Uber and Lyft. I think that, I know that when they came around, taxi cabs were not happy, so it, you know, it became a challenge for them.
Thank you. And this question is Member Thompson's question. Identify the three priorities you have for leading the Authority if you were selected as an administrator.
Um, I would say one, I think number one would probably be the budget, because let's face it, money is everything. Maintaining the budget, making sure that we don't go over the budget, of course, saving, saving the state money, of course, in the Taxi Cab Authority, so that would be probably one of the main ones. Two would make sure that all safety protocols are being followed for, you know, all the law enforcement and taxi cabs and drivers, all the employees. And three, I would say probably maintaining within the agency, making sure that it's all running the way that it's supposed to run, making sure that all the rules, regulations are being followed.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Rivera, that concludes your interview, and we thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much, it was very nice meeting you.
I'll walk you out and I'll bring in.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. This is your first?
Oh, yes.
Got any money?
Good morning.
Good morning.
For my benefit, will you pronounce your last?
Yes, sir. My name is Robert Youngquist. It's L-J-U-N-G-Q-U-I-S-T.
Great.
It's Swedish, the L silent, J is a Y.
They say Reiser is a D. So good morning, and we thank you for your application. We're going to be asking you some questions, as the Board, and the function is that we interview the applicants, and then we send names up to the Director of Business and Industry, and he is the appointing authority, Mr. Reynolds. So after we interview all the candidates, we will then deliberate on who we are going to send up by recommendation.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We're waiting for some folks to head out. You were in the room, I think, yeah, he was in the room. So the first question we have is, can you give us a three-minute elevator pitch on why you should be selected?
Yes, sir. The, from what the research I've done, I have, I have one friend of mine who is an investigator now for TA. I have two friends that are prior investigators for TA. What I've seen is that there has not been a concerted effort to incorporate all of the regulations and laws that can be applied in the, under Transportation, or sorry, Taxi Cab Authority. What I want to do is I want to be able to incorporate all of those things for your, all your investigators to be able to do all the laws, apply all the laws and regulations that they need to out on the streets. What I look at is, there is, according to my research, that there is hesitancy in the Authority to apply all those, from what I've seen and what I've heard. So what I like to do is get all of the officers or the investigators up to a status of being able to do category one work, fully category one work, so it's not just investigator twos. The, the ability for them to do their job is, my job is to get them to where they need to be to be able to function properly under the laws and regulations that they're, we're supposed to follow. As the administrator, we have to, or I have to, if I'm appointed, to bring, elevate the Authority to world-class, so that other authorities and other regulatory agencies look at us and go, that's what we should be doing.
Thank you. This question's on behalf of Member Thompson. Which of your employment leadership positions do you consider best prepared you for the administrator's position and why?
During my time as, I'm a university detective now, all right, so I lead by being assigned to stuff that I'm not technically supposed to be assigned to, all right? So for the last assignment that I had, I was in charge of all of the traffic-related issues for the National Finals rodeo this last December. All right, my lieutenant, he goes, yeah, you're not getting that position as a sergeant, but you're going to do it. I get, I'm the same level of grade as a sergeant. He goes, you take care of it. So running all taxi stands, you know, buses, limos, Ubers, Lips, all that stuff, making sure that everything runs smoothly, that is what I, I did for 10 days, and after one minor little hiccup, you know, and that was something I wanted to do, but the equipment wasn't there. Soon as I got the equipment there, no more hiccups. As an FTO, training officers, you know, that's another leadership thing, we have to get them to the level where they can operate and do the job independently, all right? So being able, between FTO and detective, I mentor officers at work to teach them what they need to do safely, so that they can operate and do the job that they need to do. So there's not just one, it's a combination of things, so I couldn't just say there's one instance where, you know, this one thing made me the leader that I should be, because it's always an evolution. I'm always learning new things.
Member Rodriguez.
Thank you. So what do you consider the biggest public safety challenges for an agency like the Authority, and how will you address these challenges?
Like the biggest Like the biggest, the biggest thing would be, you know, car stops, stopping, dealing with the public. I've been where we've had to pull people out of taxicabs because they're drunk and unruly and causing problems. That's the most dangerous part of this is doing those car stops. You know, when you're stopping cars or you're dealing with people in and around vehicles. That, you know, is training. That is the biggest thing that can be done is that we have to train our officers and our investigators, sorry, that they know how to deal with those, whether it's a use-of-force incident, whether it's just, hey, let's remove this person from the vehicle and get them on their way some other way. Or, you know, but if they're not trained to deal with those things, then that's where we're going to have the biggest danger for our officers. You know, I see it where I work now, you know, training is a big, big deal. We train all the time. I've got a nice little sunburn right now from eight hours out at the range yesterday. So getting them all trained up. I mean, defensive tactics, baton, taser, I mean, I'm not sure exactly everything you guys carry or they would carry, but being able to have the tools necessary to do the job safely. Working with other agencies, you know, Metro, Northwest Vegas Henderson, you know, incorporating their training. I've been through federal training multiple times in the last year to where I learned stuff that I didn't know and had no experience with, but now I do because of training. And I feel a much better officer for that.
Thank you. Walk us through some instances where you have changed or improved an organization's work culture.
For, let's see, for instances for that, the, our department right now, at the university, we have a very young department, all right? There is not a lot of people that have over, you know, eight years of experience left in our department. So what I'm working on right now, and I have been working on it for a while, is that I'm taking the younger, new officers and I'm training them to be investigators. So when we do our morning briefings and stuff like that, they, I go, okay, what can we have done differently in this case that you had? And then how can you help and become a better investigator so that down the line, you can also move your way up the ranks? You know, it can be anywhere from, you know, small critiques, you know, okay, well, how could we have done this better? Give them options. Okay, this is what I would have done. Okay, what do you think? All right, so moving that, that bar up from just a regular investigator and moving it up, then it goes up the chain of command where you're talking to trainers, lieutenants, field training officers, and go, listen, if you, everybody moves up, then our department is better and the culture is better.
Thank you. Next question, describe a career situation that presented unique challenges where you put, where you pursued a creative or out-of-the-box solution.
Say that one more time, sir.
Sure. Describe a career situation that presented unique challenges where you pursued a creative or out-of-the-box solution.
Well, for that, for our investigations, so I'm not going to put, sure if I'm going to exactly say this right for you, but the, for my career, again, I've been almost the 20 years of the university, all right? I went through and I trained myself and got training in bicycles, first was bicycles, then it was horses, then it was motorcycles, and then I went, became a field's running officer. Again, I was always trying to improve myself and improve the work product that I had. In 2008, I got put into the Detective Bureau as a officer, and that's a promotion. So I went in as an officer and I learned under 20-year veterans of NYPD in Chicago. I was able to work my way up through and I got promoted to detective soon thereafter. Just by pushing myself to do better at all times. It wasn't really out of the box, but it was, you know, what I wanted to do. I wanted to be an investigator. I enjoy being an investigator. I enjoy following it throughout, all the way to the conclusion of either the prison time or, you know, rectifying whatever situation comes before us. The career aspect of that, I think it would be more like this, is that putting myself out there to go further than I have been before. This is, I haven't done an interview with anyone in 20 years. So just pushing myself to do better. You know, I have a lot of ideas that would be beneficial to the authority to be able to progress themselves to a world-class agency.
Thank you. You had a chance to talk about this. What's been your biggest career disappointment?
I think that would be that my leadership at certain times was not as good as it should have been. That was my biggest disappointment, to where we're told one thing and it doesn't come to pass. That was my biggest disappointment. And it's happened during multiple leadership at where I'm at now, unfortunately.
What is your view of using progressive discipline in personnel matters? And in what situations do you believe that this is a useful human resources management tool?
Progressive discipline, obviously, we have to start at the bottom and work our way up, okay? And I'm glad you asked that question. We've had, in my experience, we've had where they, the leadership went off the deep end a little bit and someone was terminated. And then that person bought that termination and went up to the Nevada Supreme Court and got his job back. And he is currently working. You have to do the progressive discipline. If you don't, again, obviously, if they do something so egregious that they're in prison, okay, then, you know, you work with HR, you work with other entities, lawyers. Again, at the university, I can, I can talk to the university, we have a league general counsel, we have our HR representatives, okay? You incorporate them with what you're doing with discipline so that it sticks. Start off with small. Okay, now personally, I'm not looking for, I'm going to rate you up right now. Okay, it was a small thing, hey, let's discuss this. Let's correct this, okay? And work our way up. Okay, it's not like, I'm going to pull the trigger right here and you're done. You have to work your way up to that point. Because if you don't document it, then you have that same issue where if someone fights it, they're going to get rehired. If you want them out, do it properly, then they'll be out if they continue in that. But for the most part, if you nip it in the bud down at the low ends, then you won't have those problems down the line.
Member Robert.
Thank you. What is the most important skill step for a leader in a law enforcement agency?
For that, I'm going to say lead from the front, okay? I won't ask an officer to do anything that I can't do, okay? If I become the administrator, okay, I will ride along with my officers, all right? And I will learn what they, they have to do. I will want to know everything that they do and I can do that. Now, most of the stuff, I mean, again, regulatory, sorry, regulatory versus criminal, okay? I understand that there, you know, we have the regulatory side and the university has something similar. Our members, our students, our students, all right, they pay to go to school at the university. So we have a conduct board, all right? So we, if we have, you know, underage drinking or, you know, some minor stuff, disorder of conduct, stuff like that, we can send them to student conduct and not cite them criminally. So I think it's pretty similar to where, okay, we're not going to send you, cite you criminally for speeding down I-15 at 100 miles an hour, whatever, but we're going to cite you into our administrative court, the same type of thing. Now granted, if it's bad enough, yes, you're going to go to the student conduct board and you're also going to go to justice court to take care of the citation. So with that stuff, it is, you know, I need to be able to lead from the front. So if we're out, if my guys are out there doing traffic and that's the direction we want to go that day, is we're going to take and, and get taxicabs speeding out of the airport, then I'll be out there helping. You know, but if I sit in the office all day long, I don't know what's going on out there. And that's what a leader needs to be doing.
Member Dan. I promised you'd be able to talk about your ideas for the taxicab industry. Next question is, what is the greatest competitive challenge facing the taxicab industry?
At this point, I think it's gas prices. No, the, so, okay, I can go and talk about on the ground, all right? In the traffic circle, last Friday, we have 200 people line in line and we have like 10 cabs show up, all right? I think that, and again, forgive me if they've already done this, but there needs to be, they need to step up their game a little bit, okay? When people are, like the Thomas Mack is calling for taxis, when the police department for the university is calling for taxis and nothing's showing up, I think that's a problem. But I bet you if I went to zero level at the airport, there'd be hundreds of cabs lined up. And I've done that before. I've actually gone into the airport and pulled out taxis for people at the Thomas Mack that no one was coming. So I think that there needs to be a better way to alert taxis of where there is fares. You know, we're, they're out there to serve our people. And if they can't get to them because for whatever reason, they're not being told that, you know, we have 200 people standing here waiting for cabs. So I think that there is a, there should be a way to alert them. So they're traveling back to the airport and they go, oh, wait, I just got an alert, Thomas Mack needs taxis. Then I roll over to Thomas Mack real quick and pick up a fare. Because that's what we're here to do, is serve the community.
Thank you. This question is on behalf of Member Thompson. Identify the three priorities you have for leading the authority if you were selected administrator.
The first one I would do is to make sure that I am getting the people below me, the equipment, the training, technology that they need to do their job. That's probably a couple answers to that. If they're not getting, if they have training issues where we have to get all our members up to where, a certain level to where they can do the job of everybody else. I like the, the way the military did it, it's one up and two down, okay? So if I'm an administrator, I need to do the guy below, I know how to do his job below me and then the guy below him, okay? Now, because of the size of the agency, I probably could go all the way down to the bottom and work my way up. You know, if we have the training that needs to be done, I have contacts with the academies, I have, you know, contacts with, you know, Metro and Northwest Vegas and Henderson to be able to get that training done, all right? Ohio Patrol, I'm sure I could, I could find some out. I have people that I know at the transportation, gaming. So again, we have, I have a lot of contacts throughout to be able to get that training. If we need specialized training in something, then I'm going to get that for them. So technology for them, training, all right, and get them all, and get them all trained up.
Thank you for participating in the interview and we appreciate your application. You can either stay in the audience and listen to the last interview and deliberation or you may go about your business. Sorry, Mr. Chair, but I cannot stay in the audience and listen to the last interview, but you can't come back for the deliberation?
Okay, yes.
So I'll walk you out. I don't know if it lasts. And it is here.
Okay. I'll be going. I have children.
Hopefully that'll eliminate the echo.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Herms. How are you today?
I am fine.
We appreciate your application and participation in the interview process this morning. The board members are going to ask you some questions.
Sure.
Give us your best swing at the ball, to the pitch. The first question we have is, could you give us about a three-minute elevator speech on why you think you are the best candidate for the administration?
The three-minute elevator speech? Well, basically, I think that over 32 years of practicing law, I pretty much know how to run an organization. I've also run nonprofits too, 14, 15 million dollar nonprofits too. So to a certain extent, I think I know how to run a larger organization. I also know how to do budgets. I know how to do litigation. I also know how to do personnel because as a Deputy Attorney General, I, that's one of the things I did. I represented the Department of Corrections in terms of their personnel matters. That was one of the things that I did. In terms of litigation, I practiced before the Ninth Circuit as well as the district courts here, as well as the district courts in terms of state district courts. I've written briefs. I've done just about everything that I can do. I've had jobs in both litigation and non-litigation. I've been a public defender. I've been a prosecutor, have been a lot of different things in terms of knowing what I can do in terms of the number, number of times in which I've done. I think I can run this agency in the best way I can in terms of asking the question as to what exactly are we supposed to do and how well are we doing it in terms of always asking that question and always having that question in my mind when decisions are being made.
This question is on behalf of Member Thompson, who's not with us, but is on the phone list and is not physically present. Which of your employment leadership positions do you consider best prepared you for the administrator's position and why?
I think that two of them prepared me for that. One of them that prepared me for that was being chairman of a large nonprofit, which was East City of Nevada. Basically, we had a budget of between 14, 16 million dollars. We basically had board meetings four times a year and my responsibility was to basically administer the organization with an executive director, CEO, in terms of being in charge of the organization. We went over the budgets, we made sure that the personnel matters were taken care of, we took care of the litigation, we did all things in terms of doing that. In terms of litigation, I think part of the agency's role is basically implementing NRS 706 in terms of dealing with both prosecutions and dealing with issues that specifically deal with enforcement of the rules of the road as well as the enforcement of the taxicab regulations over the providers of taxicab services within the state of Nevada. That's something that we have to do. I think my litigation background can help with that process because I know how to do that. I also know how to do that as an administrative law judge, which is something I've been doing for the last six years in terms of adjudicating matters before tribunals, in terms of making determinations as to whether or not someone has a position and doesn't have a position in certain situations.
Thank you.
Sir, what do you consider the biggest public safety challenges for an agency like the Authority and how will you address these challenges?
The two basic main issues is to make sure that the individual traveling public is safe and to make sure that we govern the industry in such a way so that they feel safe and they want to use our services. Whether it be in a neighborhood or whether it be on the strip or whether it be in an airport, we should serve all people. And that's the way in which we are able to basically compete with all the other competing interests, Uber, Lyft, the RTC and other things like that. I think that we all are a group of transportation options that need to work together in order to provide to provide transportation for the Clark County and Las Vegas community. That working together, I think we can create the best transit system for the citizens of the state of Nevada.
Can you walk us through instances where you've changed or improved an organization's work culture?
Basically, one of the things in which you changed the work culture is you cannot lead from the top down. What you need to do is you need to know what's going on, both at the bottom levels of the operation as well as the top levels of the operation. One of the problems that we had at East of Seals was that our CEO had a tendency to want to make sure the board heard what he wanted us to hear to deal with raises and things of that nature in terms of what he wanted to put forward. And most of those things were raises that he wanted in terms of what we're talking about. When we asked the question as to, well, what about the workers, the people that are actually on the ground and making the determinations that makes the organization work, he kind of proved that type of situation. He also didn't want to bring to the board's attention problems that may exist within the organization. The only way that you can know how to do that is that you get in the trenches, see what's going on in the organization, talk to people. Because it's not an I situation, it's a team situation. And all members of the team need to be pulling in the same direction. So if you don't know if there's a problem, you can't fix it. And also, if you don't know that what is going on, you can't resolve any issues that come before you. That's what you need to do. I went and talked to people that were in the different departments. I talked to department heads. I asked them what their problems or what their concerns were. I brought those concerns to the CEO and said, how are we going to fix these problems? And I think that collaborative kind of situation is the way in which we should operate.
Okay, next question. Describe a career situation that presented unique challenges where you pursued a creative or out-of-the-box solution.
Out-of-the-box solution. That's a good, that's a good question. Basically, as a lawyer, usually we don't provide out-of-the-box solutions. What we usually do is we have the box, then we try to find ways around the box in terms of what's happening. One of the creative things is-
And sorry to interrupt, but you know you're not applying for an attorney position.
Yes, I know. I understand, I understand. But in terms of out-of-the-box solution-
But the humor is appreciated.
Right. Honesty. But how you deal with an out-of-the-box situation? One of the situations that I had to deal with was, and this was a hard one, this was a hard one, actually terminating a CEO. That's not easy under any circumstances. We found, we had a employee complaint about the possibility of there possibly embezzlement and some other issues that may have taken place. What we had to do at that particular point was, first of all, keep the information quiet at that particular point because we're talking about somebody's personnel situation. So what we ended up doing was I hired a firm to do an independent investigation. I hired both a law firm as well as an accounting firm to look at our books to see exactly where we are and what was going on, whether or not the financials that we were given were correct or incorrect. Then I put them on a shortened leash and a short timeframe. I, during this time, I was also consulting on a daily basis with both the executive committee as well as the other members of the board in terms of what the process of this investigation was being. Once we received the report, we convened a private board meeting and we discussed the materials that were contained within the report. Before that happened, once the complaint was made, I was concerned since the complaint was so serious that we relieved the CEO of his responsibilities pending the outcome of that investigation. Ultimately, we voted to terminate the CEO based upon what we found in the reports. That was a, and I had to walk the board through that process because it's never an easy process to try to replace someone that's in charge. And it was uncharted waters because most, in most cases, most organizations would say, I don't want the CEO to leave because I'm afraid there's going to be upheaval, there's going to be problems, there're going to be problems in terms of replacing that individual, all those kinds of things. But we have to sometimes get over those things if our organization is not serving the people that we were elected or appointed to serve. And we have to make sure that we always stay on mission and stay on point. That's what we were trying to do in terms of this situation. You deal with problems and problems are brought to you. And that's what we had to do. I didn't want to do it. As a matter of fact, I was vice chair of the board within two months of the time in which we had to start this investigation because what had happened was our chairman went and became a paid employee of another non-profit organization. So it had to lose me up to chair. This was not something that I expected I had to do nor something that I had, that I, I believed that I had to walk my way through. And it wasn't easy. I had board members questioning as to why I was doing this, whether I was, I had some type of ulterior motive or something of that nature. That's the reason why you get professionals involved in terms of trying to find out and root out what the problem is. Because I can't make that decision on my own. No matter what, I think that's not appropriate because we're talking about a person's life. We have to deal with it in a professional manner.
On the flip side of that, what's been your biggest career disappointment?
This will sound strange to you. My biggest career disappointment was, I've served for the last 21 years on the Commission on Judicial Discipline. And I think the biggest disappointment I have is the slowness in which we can operate to get judges off the bench that are doing things that are not appropriate. That we always have this internal feeling that if not for us, it would be somebody else. That we're always afraid that if we do something with someone else, then that may come back and come back to hurt us. And we make decisions based upon that. We don't make decisions based upon what the code says, what the person has done, what damage they have done to particular individuals, what damage they may have done to the reputation of the system. We have to get away from believing that our individual feelings, our operations or our concerns are more important than the roles that we have in making determinations as to whether someone should be disciplined or not be disciplined, that our personal feelings should not be in that. Because we have to do what's best for the people. And what's best for the people, if it's a bad judge, they need to leave or they need to be disciplined. And we need to do that. Maybe we also need to have better ways in which to find out about disciplining offenses. Because the way we have it now is that a citizen must bring that complaint to us before we can act. And maybe that needs to change because when we find out about something, it's really, really, really bad. And, but, but at the same time, a good thing about it is that we've only gone to public hearing on 5% of the cases. 95% of the cases are dismissed because they're decisional matters. So for a good side, that's a good side of the situation. But my biggest concern is dealing with that 5% and my other concern is dealing with the individuals that we don't see. Those are the ones that concern me. Those are the ones where lawyers are afraid to bring someone before, before the bar or that. I have problems with that because we, in order for the judiciary to work, people have to have faith in the people that are administering justice. And that has to be the number one priority. And I think I've been trying to work from the inside for the last 20 years. We've made some progress, but I think we have a long way to go.
Thank you. Number seven. What is your view of using progressive discipline in personnel matters? And in what situations do you believe this is a useful human resources management tool?
I think it's, it's a tool that you use to be fair to the employee, also to be fair to the organization. If a person can be salvaged, then you must do whatever you can in order to salvage that person. That termination of a person or discipline of a person should be the last resort. But what we should be doing is making sure that we do progressive discipline correctly. One of the things that I had a problem with in terms of the Department of Corrections is that we have a tendency to overlook little things and we let, we let it go, but it gets to a point in which we explode. We call our lawyer and say that you must now defend us relative to this matter. And then when the words that come out of my mouth says, but have we followed the progressive discipline? Have you written down the difference times in which you calced the individual? Have you had those weekly meetings with the individual in order to try to get them on the track that you're trying to put them on? Have you done these things? If you've done these things, then discipline isn't hard. But the key is, is to get our administrators to understand that it's an important tool in order to manage the organization and that we have rules and we must do them right and we must follow them every time if we're making a determination as to whether someone should be disciplined or someone should not be disciplined.
Number three.
Okay, what is the most important skill set for a leader in a law enforcement agency?
The most important skill for a leader in law enforcement agencies, first of all, they need to know, they need to know what the mission is. We cannot have mission creep. We need to understand what exactly we're supposed to be doing and that mission can change. Because you may have a problem in one area, you may want to put resources in that area and deal with the resources in that area. You may then say, well, in this kind of situation, maybe we shouldn't do it. Maybe, we also have to make a determination as to what is our role in the law enforcement hierarchy? Because we have Metro. We have the police departments that are in North Las Vegas, Henderson and other jurisdictions. We have, they have school district police. So we have to also determine what our mission is in terms of what we need to accomplish and what exactly are we doing from the top that we need to accomplish, get that accomplished. We do two things in this agency. One, we police cab companies as well as cab drivers, but we also do vehicle inspections too. And we have to take those things into account in terms of how we're doing it. How are we putting out our resources so that it's best for the public and best for the industry in terms of making it a safe industry, making it an industry that people want to use? That's what we have to do. Because we're the, we're the face, we're the face of the, of the, of the operation. So as the face, we must do our best to make sure that we keep our organization scandal-free and that we're fair and equitable to everyone that comes before us.
Okay, next question. What is the greatest competitive challenge facing the taxi cab industry?
I think the, I think they, I think they saw it up close and personal. I think that's Uber and Lyft. I think that's the biggest thing that is a problem. Also, to a certain extent, secondarily, probably RTC too. Because we have to worry about our competition in terms of the other different groups. I think that there is enough business out there that we can peacefully coexist, but there are some things that we as an agency must do and also try to maybe coax the industry to do that mirror some of the things that, the good things that Uber, Lyft and other organizations are doing so that our cabs become more user-friendly so that, one of the things that always got me was, one of the reasons why I would use Uber and Lyft is because at the end of the day, I know how much I was going to pay. Because they told me what I was going to pay upfront. With a taxi cab, I take my chances. I don't know where, when, how, going there, how, how much it's ultimately going to be. That maybe that's something that the taxi industry needs to think about in terms of having a way in which to know exactly what a fare is going to be before you, before you get in the door. So that people know, so I know, for example, I need to have $20,000 in my pocket as opposed to 50. And do I have to go to, do I have to tell you, Mr. Caff, to go to an ATM so I can go get some more money because the cap fare is more than I thought it was going to be? Those are the kind of things that we need, we need, we need to talk about. I think these are the kind of things when you think about. Maybe dealing with innovation and automation, which is something that we need to think about. I know it's expensive, I know it's hard, but in the long run, we have to compete in the environment that we're presently in. I think we're doing better now because now Uber and Lyft have found that it's not as cheap to do rides as they thought, they thought it was. And I think we're probably closer to parity now than we were, we've ever been before. So I think we should take advantage of that in terms of being higher on the scale for people to want to use as opposed to Uber and Lyft.
This question's on behalf of member Thompson. Identify the three priorities you have for leading the authority if you were selected administrator.
And I was just going to make there three things. One thing was that we don't have one person that's in charge. Where we have a situation, we have a team. And what happens is that the team must pull in the same direction of what the authority needs to do. The authority has a second goal in terms of, it has a board. So we took our direction from the board as to what the board believes, what the general priorities of the agency should be. And my job as administrator would be to implement to the best of my ability those goals, to have put those goals into their day-to-day operations. My third goal would be to supervise individuals within the authority to make sure that they are being on task and stay with the roles and procedures of the agency that we're trying to administer. That's the three things that I would do.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your participation in the interview process.
Thank you.
And the answers, if you want to stay in the room for deliberations, you may, or go about your business.
I think, I think, I think I'm going to go about my business and do some hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I will see if Ms. Rivera wants to. Agenda is item four, which is our deliberation and selection of applicants to the Director of Business and Industry. Before I open it up, I'll just remind the board that we previously interviewed three individuals and sent those names, all three names, to the Director. And I think in the statute, that the Attorney General advised me otherwise, that we can send all three or any one of these and still comply with the statute. So with that kind of setting the table, I'll open it up for the speakers.
Mr. Chair, if I may start?
Sure.
I will say that for the candidates who are here or may listen to the process deserves recognition because it is harrowing for the candidates being in, interviewing in front of a board, interviewing in a open meeting, which luckily I don't think we have any members of the press. But seven years ago, when I went through this myself, there were members of the press. It's a very unique experience which deserves recognition. Interviews are not always the best indicator of how someone will do. However, this job does require speaking in front of the board monthly, requires coming in front of the legislature, the legislative commission, the Board of Examiners, the press, the lobby, the industry and lobbyists. And that's no less nerve-wracking than this board meeting. So I just wanted to mention that before we start deliberating.
Rodriguez, do you have any thoughts or do you want me to go to somebody else first?
No, I can, no, no, okay. So on, on the elevator speech, there was, it was very brief. And I think that she could have really highlighted some of her resume as far as her skill set. I like the fact that she was an military police officer, so that gives her insight on how an organization runs from the police perspective, law enforcement perspective, and she's a veteran. She talked about becoming part of the solution after 9/11, which drove a lot of us to get into law enforcement. She did have, also have the DHS training for quite a few years there. I like the fact that she took a leadership course for a year, which is an extensive period of time. So hopefully there was some process there and growth as well. The thing that I noticed was that she has no solid insight on how the department actually runs. And I would recommend that a candidate really take a look at how the inner workings of what they're going to be chair of or administrator are in order to be able to speak to.
Anything on the other two candidates?
Are we going to go by candidate?
We can go by candidate.
Candidate. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, uncharacteristic for me, I don't really have hard thoughts on any of these candidates. Unlike our last go-around where I was less subtle about how I felt about two of them, I was impressed on how all three of them handled each other. You know, clearly there's different levels of knowledge about our organization, but that's just from, from being around. So I don't, I don't hold that against anybody or actually give that as a plus to anybody who they might know. I think they all have good resumes, they all handle themselves well and with the answers to their questions, I get the feel that they're all competent managers is what I look for. So I'm going to be more all ears than- So I'm going to be more all ears than anything else right now.
I think I am too, but I appreciate what Member Rodriguez said. I agree with her. I also, I think she had a great experience and great leadership positions, but her insight into the industry issues also might have been a little lacking as well. But I thought she, she had poise and did well in the interview and appreciate her experience.
Member Thompson, do you have any observations on candidate Rivera?
Yes, actually I do. And before I get into that, I do think we should send all three candidates up to Director.
You, you might need to unmute yourself, Member Thompson.
Actually, I thought I was unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Nothing, member or candidate. Lundquist?
Can you hear me now?
You're just going to go first.
Just from my perspective, I, I'm a mentor and I have held some leadership positions. I think it's really important when a candidate interviews to talk about some of the things that they could do better and also to highlight the things that they did very well because they walk away questioning themselves and saying, what did I do well, but you know, what could I have done better? Mr. Lundquist, I think he's a really good candidate, but I do think that he is basing his opinions on the questions as boots on the ground rather than management. And again, what does the agency do as compared to? My friend, this TA guy told me this because I know my perspective as an officer was much different than as a lieutenant because I understood what management wanted, but I also was able to fulfill the needs of the officers. So for him, I think he'd be a great candidate if he had some mentoring and also actual experience in that leadership role to understand just how important it is and the liabilities of, of running an organization like this from the management perspective.
To take it from your previous response, you don't have anything on this particular candidate?
No. I agree 100% with everything that Member Rodriguez said and I would, I would also add that the enforcement operations on the ground are one big part of managing the agency, managing the liability of the agency, interacting with the public and the industry, but it's not everything. It's a big part, but there are many other factors that are important that, like Member Rodriguez said, that you don't necessarily see on the street. I, I was disappointed that Mr. Lundquist, Lundquist, for example, I think he missed an opportunity to talk about himself and his qualifications by talking about, question one, at least, three-minute elevator pitch on why you should be selected. He talked about the deficiencies in the agency that he saw instead of talking about himself and I think that was a missed opportunity.
I agree with you on that. There was several occasions where he brought a negative as opposed to a positive. And in my opinion, if we're going to go, wanting to work for an agency, even though many things can be transformed and improved all the time, that you talk about how wonderful and the job that they have done to be able to, even for the taxi companies to survive in this environment with those Uber and Lyft type companies coming up and having that challenge constantly, you know, financially, fiscally, and everything, and then on the enforcement side. So I, I agree with you.
Member Thompson?
Can you hear me now? I think I am unmuted.
There's nothing.
One, two, three, four.
Candidate.
Nothing, huh?
Okay. Well, he was speaking so fast, and I speak really fast too, that it was really hard for me to take notes as well. And I think that he has an enormous amount of experience in, you know, when you talked about even the unfortunate demise of the CEO from Easter Seals, that is a very difficult decision to have made and then to be going against those challenges and he talked about it. His themes are very unified when it comes to the way that he looks at an organization, no matter what it is. And I think that that really shows a lot of integrity. And time and time again, when he gave examples, he talked about different agencies and different experiences and his themes were always, you know, that moral courage that we need to be able to do something that's not very easy or not be the popular guy. And then when he talked about the judges and, you know, working with the Taxi Cab Authority, realizing myself in the last year that things are slow to change because we have to have, you know, rules in order to get those things done and it takes time. So we've done working on getting those things done. I think his insight to that was, was excellent. And then just about every position that he's had, you know, with the attorney side of it, is he has held positions of leadership within those places. So I think that's really a plus for, for the organization. And he was right on point when he talked about how can we compete and talked about the practices of Uber and Lyft and maybe have the taxi cabs take a look at that innovation, automation. He says even though it's, it's, can be expensive, you need to compete in the current environment or you become obsolete. And so I thought that was a really good point. And then he finished real strong when he talked about his three points as far as what he was talking about and it was really on the positive.
Mr. Chairman, you know, with this candidate, one thing I wanted to point out, although doesn't change my view that we all, all three are strong candidates. And since in this environment, you can't ask specific questions of these people, but I do look at Mr. Armstrong's resume. He's currently in the Hearing Subdivision for Department of Administration, so he essentially acts as a judge. And if he's doing that job right, it requires him to be objective, which I found when I became a manager from being a lawyer, kind of like all in one week, I had to lean on of my ability to separate myself from the situation and much like representing a client, I was representing the agency I was running and, and look at things objectively. I look at his timeframe, he was appointed in July 16 under the Sandoval administration, but what I didn't know of that group, that means he was retained or reappointed under the Sisalike administration. And that tells me he's probably doing a pretty good job. He didn't, didn't, wasn't asked to leave or, but basically in that position, when people aren't doing a good job, whatever the governor is, if there's complaints about them, they're asked not to come. It's a, it's a periodic reappointment. And so I would put that, it's not something that came out in the interview, but I noticed in his resume, he's been there a while. He's in there now, he's apparently doing a pretty good job over there. And that's a background that I know helped me a lot in making that transition a number of years ago.
I would first say that, other than Member Soderbergh, I reject the idea that being a lawyer qualifies you to do anything but be a lawyer. So when he started, his first question is, give your three-minute elevator, elevator pitch on why you should be selected as administrator. He said 32 years as a lawyer. I immediately dismissed that because other than Member Soderbergh, in my experience, that can be a disaster. So aside from that fact, he does have a lot of actual agency experience and ALJ experience, which is, is different than being a risk manager. The problem with lawyers running state agencies is lawyers are essentially risk managers and the way to mitigate that risk is to keep everybody in the office not doing the mission. So I see that happen. So I'm not a fan of lawyers running agencies, to be honest. However, I think Mr. Armstrong has the experience that qualifies him beyond that. I thought he did a, a very good job. I particularly liked his answer to question number seven. He knows, you know, he's a state employee and he's been a state employee for a long time. He knows, he knows how to administer progressive discipline and the state way that that happens. I, I liked his answers on industry. I think he's very familiar with industry. However, I do want to state for anybody who's listening to this, the Taxi Cab Authority does not run the taxi agencies. You don't run the industry. They run themselves and we regulate them. And I want to make sure there's no confusion because a couple of the words, the way things were said, where, you know, we need to find creative solutions. Well, we don't. We need to assist industry in finding creative solutions to problems that they see are their priorities as opposed to determining those for them. So I just wanted to mention that because there were a few times when there seemed to be a little confusion, including in the last round of interviews that we did a couple of months ago where some of the candidates spoke as if we were running the taxi cab industry, which we don't. But beyond that, I thought he, I thought he did very well and had great experience and clearly is comfortable speaking in front of the board and legislature and whoever else he might have to do if he represented the agency as administrator.
I will conclude with the following comments. I think all three of the candidates are.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me at all?
Have sufficient qualifications to advance to the Director. They have different types of skills and skill sets and different kinds of life experiences, each of which prepare them in a different, in different ways for the position of being an administrator. We don't really determine what skill set the Director wants. That's his, that's his pick. He's the member of the Cabinet that reflects those. I think any one of the three candidates could, could serve in the role and so I personally am prepared to advance all three applications, but I will await a motion of my calling. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make that motion to advance all three candidates for Directors.
Is there a second?
Chairman, one second.
Good. Advance all three candidates to the Director. Any discussion? During none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Member Thompson, are you with us? I'm Secretary.
Well, I am, but I can't seem to talk to you. I can't hear you fine.
Able perhaps to participate? Does anybody need a break before we go on to item five?
Sure.
Yes?
Sure.
Okay. We'll stand in recess for five minutes. It's 5:52. We'll be back on the record at 5:57.
Aye.
Hey, can anyone hear me now? Roger Thompson.
You still cannot hear me. I see that you're speaking. I see your name.
Yeah. I'm a good man. Can anyone hear me now? I can't hear you. This is Roger Thompson.
Here on the red.
Hi, fib. It's 10:58 now, back on the record of the Taxi Cab Authority Board. And we are to agenda item five, which is the applicant petition for FEEL NAC 706-975 from Order 9 Independent Cab LLCs, eight applications seeking subpoenas to produce documents pursuant to NACT 706-936 regarding an application for a certificate of public convenience necessity by applicant Carson Lyndia, excuse me, Claudia Bockner in a cab company LLC in a quest for 35 taxi cab medallions. First item before us procedurally is that there is an intervention of Desert Cab Inc. I bring to the board's attention that Desert Cab Inc. is an intervenor in the underlying proceedings. So therefore is my recommendation that the intervention be granted. No argument, I think it's necessary given they are a party in the law. And I would entertain a motion to that. Sub moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion to admit the intervention to Desert Cab? During none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thirty-nine. The intervention is granted, but the appellant is here, Mr. Carson. The appellant is the appellant's, excuse me, the applicants of the, of the appellant. And so we will take opening statement from Mr. Carson. Desert Cab will then be allowed to respond and then Mr. Carson.
and then Mr. Carson will be allowed to apply.
Thank you, chairs, commissioners, members. My name is Brent Carson, attorney and also applicant, member of Independent Cab Company. So I filed this on behalf of Independent Cab Company by it through my through my law firm. The appeal is pretty basic. I think you all have had a chance to read it. Just my reading of the hearing officer's order of September 7th was that there was a discovery deadline of November 22nd, 2021. That was my position when I filed a number of motions in limine and motions to exclude certain parties. However, at the hearing of the pre-hearing conference, the hearing officer that was appointed by the authority here said that it was never his intention that the November 22nd was a hard and fast discovery deadline. And so what he did is he allowed the intervenors to amend their discovery responses to maybe have them provided by the first week of January 2022. And at that point, the hearing date on this application was obviously continued until the March, which is now. So what happened is I had asked for certain information. The hearing officer said, yeah, the interveners need to supplement those responses. And once they supplement them responses, he would then be allowed to apply for any further applications for subpoena or conduct further discovery. He was clear that it was, he could say that I could apply for the subpoenas, but that it was up to the board and or the administrator, acting administrator, whether the subpoenas would be granted. So I did apply pursuant to, I guess it wasn't his instructions, but his directions. And the applications for subpoenas were denied based upon that they were submitted, quote, after the discovery cutoff date of November 22nd, 2021. So my appeal was, I thought it wasn't November 22nd, 2021 was a discovery deadline, but the hearing officer said it wasn't. And so he allowed the discovery of the intervenors, Desert Cab, one of them, all of the cab companies that have intervened to conduct discovery beyond the November 22nd, 2021, allowed them to take depositions, allow them to submit more responses, additional documentation. My position is and has always been pretty, pretty consistent. You can't have a discovery cutoff for one party, but not a discovery cutoff for the other parties. So with that being said, I think that the applications should be granted. They should respond to the subpoenas and allow me to put forth my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob Winner, members for Desert Cab. I want to talk about some specifics and legal issues, and then I want to talk about a possible solution to the problem. I know Brent Carson, he's entitled to a fair hearing. He's been very spirited in his in his motion practice in this case. I think he makes a fair point. You could read that hearing officer order and say, I think that's a discovery cutoff, but it doesn't say those words. And this board, I think, thought it was a cutoff, just like Brent took that position when he was thwarting some of our discovery. I don't think it's fair to say that there have been discovery allowed for us, but not him. He was allowed to take depositions. The hearing officer would not overrule you because he can't do that. You're the authority. So this appeal followed. The 119 order is signed by the chair and for the authority. Mr. Carson cites to 706975 on appeals to the authority, which is you, and those can be taken from the hearing officer or the administrator. This is something basic that I know Mr. Carson knows, or I think he does. You cannot appeal a decision from one judicial body to the same judicial body. If he wants to go forward with the appeal, it means he has to go to district court. I think he could have filed a motion to reconsider, even though I don't believe the regulations allow that. Certainly, the rules of civil procedure locally have that, but he would have had to have done that within 10 days. So he's entitled to a fair hearing. Is this really a great idea to extend this and go to district court? If you grant this, we're going to go up? Or if we deny it, is he going to go up? I don't know. I suggest this as an idea. This appeal could be withdrawn, and he could reissue the subpoenas. Discovery's still open. I thought about the doctrine of issue preclusion or race judicata, but because your decision on the 119 order was procedural, it wasn't substantive. You weren't ruling on the merits of each request. I don't think that would apply. So I think he could just reissue the subpoenas. Now, if he does that, I know I'd asked him before to send a copy so I could talk to my client, what are you looking for? And I did see the agenda get mailed out by the authority or somebody. And so I was able to see that, what, two days ago? And some of the stuff is fine. There's some other things that are confidential I don't think should be produced, at least not without a protective order. But if he reissues the subpoenas, which I think is probably the quickest and most effective way to move forward and withdraw this appeal, then all we want is an opportunity to be heard by someone, either the board or the hearing officer on some specifics that he has requested, and either a protective order or some denied outright. But much of what he's asked for, I think, is fair. But that's what I suggest. If you if you grant this appeal, I think you've gone beyond your authority because you lack jurisdiction. Once that 19, January 19th order was signed, the only body to review it is district court, unless there was a motion to reconsider, which wasn't filed. Clearly, the hearing officer, the administrator, did not issue the order. It was the authority, you, you guys. So I think the most expeditious way to move forward is for Mr. Carson on behalf of applicant is to withdraw and reissue the subpoenas. Now, there might be some concern on his end because the hearing officer once said, I'm not going to review what the authority said no to. I don't have that authority. But you could say, listen, that's, that was procedural. Go ahead and consider this in your order or something. But that's what I suggest.
I think that's a fair suggestion. I mean, that's all I wanted to do is have the subpoenas issued and then move forward.
I have a couple of questions. Another board member's made it as well. Both, don't you agree that the hearing officer does not have authority to issue this?
I agree.
Yes.
So it's either the chair of the board or the administrator?
Yes.
So you're not citing that as some kind of an error here?
I understand Mr. Winner's point. I was kind of, I personally, I mean, I don't know if I'm not citing it, but I was kind of shocked when I saw that you had actually signed it, because there has been a, I guess, an intermediary, whether it was the hearing officer or Mr. Decker here, had been taking the helm on subpoenas that were issued procedurally. I don't know how it got up to you at that point, but considering the statutes, but if you, if the chair or the administrator can sign it, that's what the law says.
As to the argument that only the district court would now have jurisdiction, I'm a bit unable to accept that proposition, but I'll let you explain to me why the chair of the board acting as a presiding officer, that action cannot be appealed to the foreboard, like taking something to embalm court, right?
Well, that's a nice point. I don't know that that wasn't what was done. The regulation cited is for appeals from the hearing officer or the administrator to the authority. And when the authority makes a decision, which it did, it goes up. Now, there was a time when it would go up to the NTA first, but I think that that changed. It now goes to district court. I raised this in part because we would like to have an opportunity to respond to the subpoenas and object to somebody, because there's some sensitive things he's asked for that we don't want to put out in the public domain. We just don't. And I think we're right on it. But I raise this because my old law partner has frequently come before the board on this and chided me and others for not following the law. I thought the easy solution was to withdraw the appeal and reissue them because discovery's open. I had this opportunity to come in here and say, oh, yeah. So I get your point. It could go that way. And if you want to do that way, we just want to have an opportunity to be heard on objections to some of these requests. And if you say, appeal is granted, issue the subpoenas, and the hearing officer says, I'm not going to consider that, I think there's been an unfairness visited upon intervenors. So whether it's at another agenda or if you direct the hearing officer to consider our issues, either way is fine.
Question for both. Mr. Carson first. I don't agree with you. I cannot fathom how the order, how the hearing officer says that that was not a discovery cutoff date. It was not called that, but I'm just going to tell you my view. When an order says you cannot present evidence and you can't present a witness if you don't have on a list by November 22nd, I don't understand how that's not cutting off discovery. So my question to you is, should you not have appealed the hearing officer saying it wasn't a discovery cutoff?
No, I mean, I understand. I do know that based upon what he wanted from us, as Mr. Winner pointed out, I've been a little hard sometimes on producing or whether or not following the black letter of the law. He wanted more of a relationship between us where we're working together. So for example, Mr. Traptan filed notice of deposition for myself and my expert, but it wasn't, didn't give me 14 days' notice. So I said, no, 12 days' notice. I'm not peering. He wanted us to get along. So I knew that at that point, it wasn't going to be, you know, all right, let's get along, let's do this. And I knew that the January 5th date wasn't going to stand once his, once he came out with it. So there was really no reason to say it wasn't a cutoff because he was allowing me the same opportunities as them. But I guess it didn't go up the chain of good to you. So I really didn't, it didn't bother me. If it was one, if it was good for one, it's good for the other. So that's the reason I didn't care.
Winner?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question.
Why didn't Brent appeal?
Why wasn't it a discovery cutoff? Why wasn't November on the on the plain meaning of the order?
Well, the order didn't have those words, discovery cutoff. But when I read it, and I've misread orders before, I read it that way. If you can't produce anything beyond that date, that kind of sounds like a discovery cutoff to me. Now, we had moved because we'd been thwarted on some discovery based on that. Well, we asked, hey, can you reopen discovery to the hearing officer? And we've issued some stuff. And he said, yeah. I wasn't at, I was out of town, but I was on the phone with my client. And it was, I didn't mean for that to be a discovery cutoff, hard and fast. Oh, okay, good. I get how you read that order, because I read it the same way as did Brent. But here we are. When Brent, after the hearing officer said, no, we're going to reopen discovery or keep it open, I guess is a better way to phrase it, Brent said, well, will you give me the subpoenas now? And he said, I'm not going to overrule the authority. They've already ruled no. So here we came to this.
Well, I think what the hearing officer said is, I don't have, you can apply, but I don't have the authority to grant, which is true as a matter of law.
Yes.
You know, it's my feeling that we're sort of arguing a lot of fine points a lot, but parties have already, without shaking hands, have come to an agreement. And I don't know that we really need to deal with it so much as allow them to try to work it out. It seems like they have. I guess the big unknown would be then, will will somebody issue those subpoenas when the applicant brings them forward? And will Desert Cab have an opportunity to object or request a protective order on some of the things since they've already seen what's going to be in them, assuming it's the same thing? That's, you know, that's just a big question. But I, we give them an opportunity to fix this themselves.
I don't agree with the idea that only the district court has jurisdiction. I think the authority has broad latitude to reconsider the hearing officer's decision and its own ruling prior to some kind of final ruling that needs to be appealed. So I guess, again, if they've worked it out between themselves, do they need us? The one thing I don't want to do is continue to delay this and continue to have it occupy the authority's time on the agenda if the parties can agree without the authority needing to be involved, I would say. So we're going to argue about whether or not this needs to go to district court. My argument's going to be, no, it doesn't. And parties could go to district court to prove this wrong. But I don't know that benefits anybody, so.
I'm going to say I concur. The Attorney General can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is not a final order under 2033. There is no district court jurisdiction here, in my view. Am I misreading that?
No, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you on that interpretation.
It's an inlocutory order. It's not subject to judicial. Member Thompson, are you on? And if you are, do you have any questions? During none. I guess my other question for opening for a motion to, definitely Attorney General, is can the authority delegate to the hearing officer the authority to make a recommendation on objections to the subpoenas if the board were to order them issued? And then ultimately bring those objections back to the board or the administrator for the actual signing?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman. I believe that would be an appropriate use of administrative authority to review the underlying administrative procedures and then remand to the ALJ to proceed in accordance with the board's guidance. And I would, you know, put forth that I do not know of any statute or case law that circumscribes the board's authority to provide that sort of procedural guidance in this discovery.
So for the other board members, the reason I ask that, which probably goes to member sort of group's comment, which is it gets to the bottom line of that subpoenas actually get signed on the second go around. I think what we could do is I think what we could do is, if the board wants to order, grant the appeal, order the issuance of the subpoenas, but only after the parties are entitled to, you know, subject to objections. And then, if there are objections, those come back to the board to determine. Or we can, that's one way of doing it. That's probably the least efficient, probably the most efficient would be to remand to the hearing officer to take evidence and issue an order on subpoenas, on any objections to the subpoenas, and then just have those come back to us, consider the objections. Because if it goes to the administrator, that unfairly puts him in the role of having to decide that, once the board's already coming to grips properly to take that.
Mr. Chairman, for my own clarification, the, my understanding that there isn't any objection to the subpoena other than maybe a small disagreement as to the intent of the hearing officer. There's no objections to granting the subpoenas, which is what it seemed like I heard. The more efficient is simply, or there was.
I believe that Attorney Winter is saying, we want to voice some objections to the form of subpoenas.
To some of the requests.
So to add on to what you were saying, they already know what their objections are upfront, so you're going to know, if you don't already, the objections upfront, so.
I can guess which ones they're going to object to right now. I can guess which ones they're going to object to right now.
That can be clarified ahead, and then you don't have to worry about subpoenas, except that they're going to tell you no in the first place.
They're going to want our adjudication of whether that is, whether the subpoena will be over the...
I got you.
And that's why I think it's ultimately going to have to come back to us, because we can't give the hearing officer the authority to issue the subpoenas, this statutory.
And I think procedurally is what happens, I was just looking at NAC 706-936, is that the subpoenas get issued, and I say, Desert Cav, give me these documents within 10 days. They have, within that 10 days, they have to make an objection to you guys to do that. So the subpoenas actually get issued, served, and then the objections come, and then we come back before you.
The objection to the ALJ?
Pardon?
To the ALJ?
Well, we can either hear them ourselves, or we can send them to the ALJ to make a recommendation to us on, because he may want to take evidence on relevance and all, so all kind of other business that, while I believe the board can do, I think it may be more efficient for the ALJ to take that evidence and send up a recommendation to us on that. But I don't have a strong preference on whether we have...
And I would say that the authority for that is there, and I would ask our board counsel, the board can delegate that to the administrator, then can be really delegated to the hearing officer.
Delegate what?
Which, well, the authority to respond to the objections, or, I guess, the board's not equipped to...
So I would just clarify, I think, you know, the statute says that, you know, the tax authority or the administrator conduct the hearing, and then the administrator may issue subpoenas. And here we have designated an ALJ, so I think technically the administrator could, where there's no ALJ, but we really wouldn't want to basically conflate those two roles and probably keep the decider to be the same as far as the subpoenas, and then any objections, and then any legal basis for granting or denying those objections. I think you could act as that ALJ according to the statute, but since you are not, I think there are procedural reasons.
And since previously you've appointed an ALJ to make, to conduct those proceedings, I kind of agree with the, with our counsel, that we should now have you serving in the administrator function as both, as like a super ALJ over the ALJ.
Which is not what I was proposing. I was proposing that there was authority for the ALJ to, you were saying that for delegating to the ALJ the authority to do that might not be a law, however, the administrator delegating that authority to the ALJ is, and the board can...
But you've already appointed the ALJ, so I think we can send something back to the ALJ.
Mr. Chairman, I might have a suggestion, and I don't know if it works, it might delay things a month, but we meet in a month. What we're hearing is, they don't really disagree. There might be some fine points, peanut, should we give these two parties an opportunity to come with a stipulation? Mr. Winter's clients already know what the questions are. I would assume they know where the information is, it's not going to be cold whenever we act, they can get on it pretty quick. They already know which ones they either don't want to answer or want to have a protective order. I'm wondering if they could just figure it out, and we get a stipulation saying, here's the subpoenas, these are the ones that have protective orders, and if they agreed not to have something in those subpoenas, we would never even know about it. And that's fine. And so then now we've got a document that we can consider that basically has it all in one nice piece, there's no, there's no remanding and having the ALJ kind of worry about what we said, it'll all be written out, and everybody has plenty of time to know what it's going to be in, and they'll figure it out. Apparently, these two lawyers at work, they know each other. I imagine they could sit down over coffee and say, yes, yes, protective order, no, and what do you think? And they'll just figure it out, and we'll have it all written down in black and white.
Puzzled, sorry, puzzled, my guess is Mr. Winter's is understating his objections.
I've never been accused as an understater. Thank you.
To your point, member Surber, it would be, that would be a more efficient, because we know we're here in about 30 days, and we could hear any objections to the subpoenas at that point, and accept. And then we could just decide as a body whether to issue the subpoenas. Well, we're not, we're going to have entered subpoenas already, but we can rule on objections, is what you're basically saying. If they either come with a stipulation, or they come with a stipulation and objections and...
There could be a partial stipulation, because we just couldn't agree on A, B, and C, and so, board, please consider A, B, and C, but everything else we got covered. That would, I think, would be the most efficient.
I tend to agree, because by the time this gets down to the hearing officer, during the set and back, we're probably three months out instead of one month out. So I would entertain a motion that, that the appeal be granted, that the subpoenas issued, that within 10 days of the issuance of the subpoenas, interveners may object, and that at the next meeting of the board, we either be presented, we be presented where the parties agree, and where the parties don't agree, and we'll determine at that time whether protective order on the subpoenas will or won't be granted. What are the parties, yes, Mr. Chairman?
I would change the word issued to served.
Oh, okay.
And if you, if you want...
Issued and served.
Yeah.
That would be issued and served.
And if you want to serve by email, which is very common, someone at the table over here has been doing everything by mail, because it's in the rule, emails work good too. They're quicker, and a lot less paper and postal.
We have a rule that says we have to do it by mail, so we'll rule by mail. One of the things we ought to change about the map, but over the statute.
The only thing I don't see in the regulations is if they file a written objection, I don't see where I have any authority to file a response to that. Do you want my response in writing, so it comes before you guys?
Yes.
Okay. That way you'll know where I'm coming from, so you don't have to just guess what I'm going to say?
Right.
Okay.
I'm an optimist, I'm assuming you'll work it all out.
I can tell you, I'll do, I'll agree to a protective order, so, right now.
Yeah, well, that's good, you'll have, you'll have a good coffee date.
Well, there are some things he asked for where I don't think there are documents. They're contention, I call them contention interrogatories, identify everything on this, blah, 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 an element. But there's some specific things he asked for that we don't want to produce, and certainly not without a protective order.
So to restate the motion, oh.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, let's see how close I am. Okay, great. I move that the appeal be granted, the subpoenas be issued and served. Within 10 days of that occurring, the interveners may object in writing, and the next board meeting, the parties will present their agreement or disagreement to the board for determination.
With one friendly amendment, that within 10 days of the objection, Mr. Carson has the opportunity to reply. That way we have both sides already briefed when we're sitting here.
Accepted.
I think it'll be more efficient for the board.
Sure. Accepted.
Second, any further discussion?
To see, I have a little puzzled look on your face, I just want to make sure you're clear on that, that you're going to have 10 days, because we were talking about dates and miscommunication earlier, so we're all on the same sheet of music now.
I think so, I'm going to get four objections from the subpoenas, or maybe more, so I'm going to have, I'll try to do one general, because I, that's all I can say.
Parties understand.
I'm pretty sure nobody's going to appeal this decision. Brent, you want to take that up?
Further? I'm not going anymore. If you would have said no to this thing, I would just say, let's go.
Further discussion? During, opposed in favor, sitting by by saying no. Opposed, opposed. So granted. Thank you.
Interlocutory. Going around some big words that are right.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. We are to agenda item six, which is industry discussion. Please, matters set on the agenda, do you hear suggestions, comments, concerns? Identify your name.
Rich Frakes from Desert Cav. I just, there's just a couple of things. Gas prices are over 445, and have been for the last two weeks, so we have a 30-day window when they're, so I'd just like to see if we can put that on the next agenda item, so we don't have to wait till the next meeting to discuss that about the fuel surcharge.
So I'm not, I'm not clicking on, we're in fuel surcharge right now?
That's correct, I don't know that there is another level.
There is not.
Better than trigger.
There is, that's why we need to discuss it at the board.
Well, I think there's your opportunity to discuss whatever you'd like the board to hear, but there's no action item on the agenda, and we're not aware of industry's position on this in any way, this would be an opportunity to make the board aware.
So I guess my, my comment, only my comment alone is, you may, I think the industry may want to file an application for an amendment of an order, if you think, there's an order, there's a standing order right now, if you think that order needs to be amended in some respect, I think, to get it on the next agenda, you ought to file...
Right, I believe in the order, in the board order, it said, it was an automatic, when it was at, I'm going to say, I don't know the exact number.
Three something.
Three something.
Right.
325, I believe it was.
Or 23 or something.
And then if it goes over 445 for 30 days, then we bring it back up to the board. So I'm bringing it back up to the board, we can, we can send something in to, to put that on the...
If you're officially bringing it back up to the board in response to instructions in the order, I would ask that it be in writing to the authority or through the agency, so we can get it on an agenda.
Okay.
And again, just my comment, and it would be helpful to have some kind of a recommended, you know, what you think should be done, not just, you know, what, what's the solution?
Correct.
So that when we collect, individually read that application, we have some idea of where you guys are headed, and ask staff, hey, what do you think?
I agree with that, I just want, again, I just want to bring it up to make sure that we're...
Completely appreciate it, I just want to make sure that you weren't disappointed by just getting something on the agenda.
No, 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 I would not be disappointed. So I understand that there's some procedures, but I just wanted to make sure that it was, that I'm bringing it up. Also, there, we talked about, there's some regulations, like some old regulations, like the green light that's on top of the cab, that every cab has to have when you push the button. Well, our technology now has...
Sorry, gentlemen?
Yeah, can you please take that discussion outside? Thank you.
Our technology has changed a lot. So the green light is obsolete anymore, because it's, it was put in place, I think, 20 or 25 years ago, that's supposed to alert the police if there's something wrong with the cab driver. Well, now we have technology that says, when you push the button, it alerts our dispatcher, and our dispatcher can see where the cab driver is, we have GPS, and they can communicate with them through, at least our meter, through the cabot group of the cabot, we can talk to the cab driver through the meter, so we can see if the cab driver's okay, and we have cameras in the car that we can see all those videos. So we just believe that that, that light is obsolete, I mean, if the light, the lens comes off, the TA officer's redlining the cab, and the cab driver loses, you know, has to go back to the yard, there's a lot of those things that I think we just need, we've talked about having a workshop, so maybe we can have a workshop to maybe amend some of those obsolete regulations that are in, in place.
Well, we certainly can add back to the list of items that we heard at the workshop, right?
Right. And we, I think we will have another workshop scheduled at some point in the near future.
Yeah, so I just wanted, again, bring it up, we have a list of other things we can bring up in the workshop, I mean, I just wanted to bring up an example, so.
And you wanted that light changed to orange now, right?
I'd like the light changed to be nothing.
Oh.
So, just one last thing, it breaks, right? So.
Very impressive. Thank you. Other members of the industry, bring nothing more, on agenda item six, we are to agenda item seven, staff reports. Acting Administrator Decker in that court.
Okay, Mr. Chair, board members, in my role as the interim administrator, I will go through agenda item 7A. We, agency lost Nancy, that's why you don't see her, Nancy Renz moved on to another position, and we were lucky enough to hire Katana over there, who was stepped in like, like there was no break whatsoever, which is very great, and thank you Corazon for assisting us both today. The agency has completed its uniform change, and so you'll now see tax cab authority officers wearing khaki cargo pants with polo shirts, most often, as opposed to the blue police uniforms that they previously wore. We also changed the wording from, on their markings from tax cab authority enforcement to tax cab authority police, to make sure that the, their law enforcement duties are recognized in the public, because that prevents escalations. We implemented 410s shifts for our enforcement section to increase evening and weekend coverage without having to stretch officers, they didn't have them out there without backup. We're considering 410s for inspectors currently, since their numbers have been reduced as well through 2019 session. We're pursuing and almost complete with the purchase of the items on the uniform schedule, which the agency has not been doing in the past, based on its legislatively approved budget. We've completed the outfitting of the officers hired last year with their ballistic vests, which were on back order, hired Katana. We also have an offer out and a start date for administrative assistant two, we'll be working the license encounter. We've got recruitings out for other positions, including Nancy's vacant position, so at some point in time, we're hoping to have both Katana and Nancy's replacement onboard at the same time, which I think will have been years since the agency's had two MA2s at the same time. And then we also were successful in getting a work program approved to purchase new medallions for the vehicles for tax cabs, which... for vehicles, for tax cabs, which I think it's been about nine years that the agency's been trying to purchase new medallions. So you may see those out there. The only other item I'll mention, unless the board has questions for me, in response to the roof numbers that were mentioned previously, we did reach out to Metro and Metro is very insistent that the roof numbers be maintained. They also require them on RTC buses and their own vehicle, I don't know if it's their own vehicles or other vehicles, but they do use them. I have personal experience with, you know, if you have 60 cabs at a stoplight on the strip, law enforcement searching for an escaping bank robber who's escaping by cab, numbers on the cab become real important as opposed to GPS, because GPS is all pointing to one place. So I am not a fan of getting rid of those numbers. However, industry, I do want you to know that we checked and Metro is also insisting that they. Currently, we've got 3,757 active permit holders. That is up three from last month. 16 new drivers in the last month and.
50?
16 new drivers.
Oh, 16.
And that concludes my report unless the board has any questions for me. And if you would like to hear from the chief investigator, the chief investigator's report.
Please. Do you have anything you want to share with us?
Just to add, in regard to recruiting for investigators, we're obviously continuing to do that. We have a couple of people in the background now. Come close to making a final offer on a candidate. Hopefully, he'll be starting in the next couple of weeks or so. And I just wanted, if I may.
Yes, again.
Touch base on a couple of things that we're seeing out there as far as an ongoing issue is in regard to the mask. I think we've discussed this before. Oh, and by the way, chief investigator, Ruben Aquino, for the record. In regard to the mask, there's been several questions being asked of us every single day as to whether or not we're citing the drivers. And the answer to that is no and yes. So in the no part, no, we, the directive from the administrator, as, and I pass it along to the troops, is that we are to educate the drivers, let them know what the current mandate is and that that mask is required by them while they're transporting passengers, while they're transporting passengers. Right? I wanted to make clear that because that's one of the things that they had brought up. The yes part to this is that we have cited some drivers. When we did make a stop, they weren't so cooperative with the officer, so he exercised discretion in providing him with a citation. We do, we're out there telling them they need a mask. There's been a few times where they didn't have a mask in the vehicle, so officers are providing them with a mask. And they've been for the, over, I would say 99% of them have been very cooperative and understanding and willing to abide by the law. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's something that is constantly, on a daily basis, we're answering those questions. And enforcement is happening every day in regard to the mask. Just to bring you to the pulse of what's going on on the Las Vegas Strip, as you guys probably have guessed, the tourism is coming back. Streets are busy, the hotels are busy, the cab drivers and the cab companies are busy as well. So in pointing to page three of the stats, you'll see that our citations are leading in the department of, or in the category of safety, comfort, and convenience. So what does that mean? And I just wanted to take a second or two to explain to you that broad, very broad category. The main things that we're seeing by, by the drivers is a lot of speeding. Okay? That's a big concern of ours. It's a big concern of Administrator Decker in regard to traffic violations. There's a lot of people on the road, vehicle-wise, and a lot of people on pedestrians on the streets. The drivers have to slow down. So that's an emphasis by our enforcement unit, that slow down. They are being issued citations, as you could see from the, that category of number of citations issued. Number two, as far as in that category, there, the violation of not stopping, giving pedestrians right away. So that's something that we're also addressing. We're constantly enforcing, we're constantly policing that at the various entrance and egresses of the hotel casinos. Okay? And I think that's all we have, but in just last, one last thing, we're constantly vigilant, obviously, with the unlawful passenger transportation that's still out there. So we're still after that. So everyone's doing a great job and as Administrator Decker has pointed out, there's a lot of hiring going on. And that's a hard part, but also what's a hard part and takes a lot of our time is training. Right? And so everybody's doing a great job, not just my team, but collectively, the whole agency is working extremely hard and we're just proud of what they're doing. And that's my report. Questions?
I'm going to.
Oh, so.
Go ahead. I just wanted to add a couple of things. One, one is the citations that the chief investigator mentioned for, for traffic violations, basically the category of safety, comfort, convenience. The authority has the ability to cite them administratively, which results in a fine and does not put their driver license in jeopardy. Unless we have repeat offenders, and then we also have the ability to cite them criminally when, when we decide that someone is, that their driving is a danger to public safety. The other thing, so I think you were talking about admin sites for, we've gone out there, we've, we've increased the number of admin sites to make sure that someone is regulating the traffic patterns of driver, taxi drivers out there. The other thing, the, I just want to remind industry and the board and anybody who might be listening, the governor's emergency, the emergency directive referenced public transportation back to the CDC, which still has the mask mandate in place. It does appear that they are going to be looking at revising that relatively soon, if you follow it in the news. We're now, we're now categorizing a mask violation as a secondary reason to make a traffic stop, although we do walk the lines and talk to drivers at the airport when they're, you know, when they're in the queue, that kind of thing. We don't generally cite mask violations. As Chief mentioned, we provide them with a mask unless someone escalates the situation and refuses. At that point, they're willfully violating and at that point, I don't care, they can get a citation. Because compliance is one thing, hey, you're supposed to be wearing a mask, here's a mask. But if the driver's going to refuse to wear a mask, at that point, he's willfully violating and I have no problem citing those because that is the law. And we do understand that it's difficult to, for the traveling public to get on a plane and be required to wear a mask, get in a taxi cab, be required to wear masks, spend three days in a casino and not be required to wear a mask, and then take a cab to a different casino where they also won't be required, but for five, 15 minutes be in a cab where they do it. So we're not trying to, we're not trying to lean on industry in regard to this, but we absolutely will lean on drivers who willfully refuse to obey any legal order with a taxi cab authority officer. That's, that's what we're on.
I had a question for the chief and then Administrator Decker brought something up. I gave me a second question, probably can answer both. Since I've been here, we've talked a lot about these illegal rides. Where does that show up in this report? Or doesn't?
Yes, it does. Should be on here. Is that a deceive, attempt to deceive, or is that something else?
No, that's something else. I'm sorry.
Hi, Mr. It's impound of taxi, NRS 70688395.
Oh, impoundments.
Impoundments.
Member Soderbergh, do you, would you find that?
I'm looking through one of your various pages.
Right. There's two. It's the third page.
Okay, here, here where we've got the NACs and the NRSs.
Yes.
Okay.
Impound, impound of taxi is what it's.
Okay. So this report is saying we, we impound two vehicles for not being licensed.
Yes.
Not being switched on, as most of this is, you've expressed to me. So we, we had two in February, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So you say it's ongoing, but it's like a.
Well.
Or we're.
All of the above.
Okay.
Okay. Depends on mission, mission changes daily.
Sure.
But at the same time, I could assure you that folks have been assigned to monitor and be vigilant about this. That's part of our duties every day when we're working out in the field, as well as we monitor Craigslist and other, other forms of advertisements so that we can conduct sting operations. But that's one of the tools that we use that, as far as everyday operational thing, these officers are constantly looking for these individuals.
And I would say it's, it's not necessarily a reflection of the marketplace getting better, it's more a reflection of the, the agency splitting its time with others. So if you look at the Baylaws, it's up to 52. All of those citations were officers that were not doing lawful passenger transport UPTs. So in the beginning, about a year ago, we were almost doing 100% UPTs. However, I directed Chief Aquino to split some of the time between that and Baylaws because that was, it perceived as being a problem that was relatively unregulated in the marketplace.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I'm assuming, you know, never, supposed to do right along my schedule, but I haven't done that yet, but I'm, I'm assuming an officer's out in the field and they know if we've administratively cited a driver many times before for speeding. We've got that technology there. So it's not, but they've got to go back to somebody that might not be in the office or whatever, they got to.
I'd like to respond to that just a little bit more as far as technology-wise. And so we have a full-time dispatch unit that actually takes the service calls, sends us to service calls, and takes all sorts of calls from the riding public. So going back to their dispatch job, one of the things they do, obviously, is to run criminal history through our various information systems, as well as run a history. So they're capable of, an officer calls, makes a stop on a taxi cab driver, he can have that person's history run and they would give it to him verbally.
Even the administrative citations, or?
All of the administrative citations. Yes, sir.
There's an internal case management system that all of the TA's activities go into. So any contact that they've had with the driver that resulting in certain outcomes will be available to dispatch to relay to the office in the field, and they do.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions, other questions on the statistics? Anything from our legal counsel?
Sir?
Anything from our legal counsel?
Just briefly, sir.
Good morning. David Ricker, agency administrative attorney. I just wanted to supplement something that the interadministrator said before. We also do have a legal secretary trainee starting on March 28th. So that's been, all this has been extended, my understanding, she's, she's accepted the position. So just part of that rebuild and I wanted the board to know that.
Congratulations and I apologize for not mentioning that because that is.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
On future agenda items, I think we have two that we know of. One, we're going to be hearing any objections on the subpoenas in a cab matter. And second of all, we may receive a request from the industry to take action relative to the fuel surcharge. Any other future agenda items that we are aware of?
I suppose we could possibly have the announcements of an administrator candidate being slated.
We may. We may not. So. So our member Soderbergh, anything?
No, I've got nothing.
Very good. That concludes agenda item seven. Agenda item eight is on our agenda pursuant to NRS chapter 241, that open meeting law. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address us, matters within the jurisdiction of the board, on which no action may be taken today. Is there any member of the public which would like to make public comment at this time? Hearing none, closed public comment. And we are to our final line of adjournment. If there's no further business, we'll end. So moved.
Hold second.
Been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I would say aye. Aye, aye, aye. All those.